Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 19th, 2023 Hibbing City Council Meeting. Let the record show that all councilors are present with the exception of Mayor Pete Haiduk. Mayor Pete Haiduk has accepted an invitation from Representative Spencer Igoe to be on the House floor for the Governor Walz's State of the State address this evening. That is why he could not be here. What an amazing opportunity to have our mayor down there representing us this evening. So, I thank Pete for doing that. Number two, adds and deletes. Add consent agenda number 16, number 17, and number 18. Add department and committee reports, number D6. Add bids and quotes, number 3A. Add license and permits, number 5, number 6, and number 7. And add closed session. Approval of the agenda. Can I get approval of the agenda? Motion made by Councilor Bayless to support. Support by Councilor Hildebrand. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, number three. Number four, City of Hibbing Police Department oath of office for Sidney Hogg. Are you ready? Perfect. Outside it. Raise your hand and repeat after me. I...
Aye.
Sidney Hogg.
Sidney Hogg.
Have been duly appointed as police officer...
Have been duly appointed as police officer.
For the City of Hibbing.
For the City of Hibbing.
I do hereby solemnly swear...
I hereby solemnly swear...
I will defend, enforce, and obey...
I will defend, enforce, and obey...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the State of Minnesota.
And the laws of the State of Minnesota.
And the City of Hibbing.
And the City of Hibbing.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
The duties as a police officer...
The duties of a police officer.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Awesome. Congratulations. All right, approval of the minutes. Approve the minutes of the city of the Hibbing City Council Meeting for April 5th, 2023. Wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Schweiger?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes of the Hibbing City Council Workshop Meeting for April 5th, 2023. Wish of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Councilor Whitney?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda. Consent agenda. Approve accounts payable dated 4/14/2023. Checks number 174476 through 174562 in the amount of $731,131.77. Number two, approve the city payroll for the pay period ending 4/7/23. Checks numbers 168702, 168707 in the amount of $544,574.35. Number three, accept and place on file the Hibbing Police Department Activity Report for the month of March 2023. Number four, approve the updated job description for accountant one position. Number five, acknowledge the resignation of Tara Paginon, PBA Tech, with Hibbing Police Department effective May 16th, 2023. Authorize the posting of a part-time PBA Tech with Hibbing Police Department. Number seven, acknowledge the resignation of Jerry Martin with the Hibbing Fire Department effective May 2nd, 2023. Number eight, acknowledge the retirement of Kurt Metzig with the Hibbing Fire Department effective June 2nd, 2023. Number eight, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the service agreement between the City of Hibbing and Safe Assure. Number 10, approve the new city service summer student job description. Number 11, approve the updated city services maintenance job description. Number 12, authorize the city, the Hibbing City Council to tour the Red Rock Hotel on Tuesday, April 25th at 2023 at 1:00 p.m. Number 13, set the next regular scheduled Hibbing City Council Meeting for Wednesday, May 3rd, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chambers. Number 14, set the Hibbing City Council Workshop for Wednesday, May 3rd, 2023, following the Hibbing City Council Meeting at the Hibbing, at the City Hall in the Hibbing City Council Chambers. Number 15, set the city administrator's quarterly review for Wednesday, May 10th, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. in the HITA suite at City Hall. Number 16, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the Hibbing Walmart Supercenter Re-Grand Opening Celebration on Friday, May 12th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. Number 17, authorize the hire of Dylan Mattson for the seasonal maintenance position with the city services pending a successful completion of pre-employment contingencies. Number 18, authorize the hire of Christian Lennar for the seasonal maintenance positions with the city services pending a successful completion of the pre-employment contingencies. And then as a reminder, we had set the Hibbing City Council Strategic Planning Sessions for Wednesday, April 26th, 2023 at 3:00 p.m. in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chambers. Wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published, and then I do have a question afterward.
Motion to approve by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman?
Support.
Support from Councilor Schweiger? Any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I have a question regarding number five, or 15. Is that a closed session?
It is indeed.
Okay, should we add that then, or?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So, still with my motion with that little change there. Thank you.
Still good. Perfect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, department and committee reports, number one. Fire Chief?
Good evening, mayor members of the council. The fire chief cannot be here tonight, so I'm here in his place. First item, the fire department was awarded a grant for $4,000 from the Hibbing Foundation. This is going to be to purchase active shooter equipment for all of the ambulances. It's the first phase of our program for developing our active shooter plan, and we're asking your approval to accept this grant.
Thank you. So, we're looking for approval for offer for resolution number 23-04-09, accepting a grant on behalf of the June B. Hendrickson Academic Competition Fund on behalf of the Hibbing Foundation in the amount of $2,390, and the Dr. Benjamin P. Owens Hibbing High School Legacy Foundation in the amount of $1,610 for active shooter gear for the Hibbing Fire Department. Wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Bayless? Do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I will abstain, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
One abstained, perfect.
And I do believe there will be additional grant monies coming to offset the total cost of the program, so...
Awesome. Onto B.
Yeah, the second item is a contract with St. Louis County for some supplemental ambulance reimbursement for runs that we take outside the city limits. So, that would include the townships that are part of our primary service area as well as mutual aid and intercept calls. And we'll get a subsidy from the county. It has increased a little bit, hence the reason for the new contract. And requesting your approval on this so we can recapture this revenue.
Thank you. So, requesting approval, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement between the City of Hibbing and St. Louis County for supplemental payments for ambulance runs taken outside the corporate limits of Hibbing. Wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to number two, Finance Director, Treasurer Sheena Muller?
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. Item A is to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the insurance broker service agreement between the City of Hibbing and USI Insurance Services. We talked about this at the last workshop meeting. Our current agreement expires at the end of June, and we are looking to sign a new agreement with USI to provide these services. The fee is $80,000 per year, which is about $40,000 more than we are spending now. However, USI will immediately begin evaluating our claims and work on a renewal to find areas we can save on our premiums. During the renewal, they will also enroll our employees in two new benefit programs that will automatically save the city 6% on our premiums. The savings alone will be more than the additional amount that we would be spending on their service fee. So, I'm asking the city council to approve the agreement.
All right, so we're looking for authorization for the mayor and city clerk to sign the insurance broker service agreement between the City of Hibbing and USI Insurance Services. Wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Bayless? Do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto B.
Item B is to approve setting the deductible for our property casualty coverage at $5,000 per occurrence. We also talked about this at our last workshop meeting. Historically, we have set the deductible at $500 per occurrence. Our agent is recommending that we set it at 5,000 now per occurrence. They completed a five-year look back on our claims, and the average savings in premium with the new deductible would be around $65,000 per year. So, I'm asking for council to approve the deductible change.
All right, so we're looking for approval for setting the deductible for our property casualty coverage at $5,000. Wish of the council? Motion to approve by Councilor Schweiger?
Or do you want to go? Please.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to number three, Library Manager Laura Keeneman?
Good evening, members of the city council. I come before you this evening to offer resolution number 230410, accepting a grant from the Dr. Benjamin P. Owens High School Legacy Foundation in the amount of $2,575, and the Bruno and Sylvia Perrell Family Hibbing Foundation Fund in the amount of $2,425 for the 2023 Hibbing Summer Reading Program, Find Your Voice.
All right, excellent. So, we're going to need a motion to approve offer resolution number 23-04-10, accepting a grant from the Dr. Ben P. Owens High School Legacy Foundation in the amount of $2,575, and the Bruno and Sylvia Perrell Family Hibbing Foundation in the amount of $2,425 for the 2023 Hibbing Summer Reading Program, Finding Your Voice. Wish of the council?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to support.
Motion for support by Councilor Hildebrand? One second. Second by Councilor Bayless? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And one abstain. I will abstain.
Motion carries. All right, on to B.
Thank you. The next thing on the agenda is to offer the resolution number 230411, accepting the grant from the United Way of Northeastern Minnesota in the amount of $2,500 for the summer reading program.
All right, awesome. So, we're looking for an approval for offer for resolution number 23-04-11, accepting a grant from the United Way of Northeastern Minnesota in the amount of $2,500 for the summer reading program. Wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman? Support from Councilor Schweiger? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to number four, City Attorney Andy Borland?
Mayor, members of the council. Within your pack is a resolution 2304-12, authorizing the mayor and the clerk to execute an easement with respect to the Rainy Road Bridge, is how I entitle the resolution. City engineer has advised the council previously that they need to build a bridge with respect to this particular area. Both Mr. Story and myself have entered into negotiations with the DeBlak family to get this addressed. Mary DeBlak has already executed this document. Mr. DeBlak negotiated the terms of it with Jesse, and we're just, I think, waiting for his signature. But Jesse does need this done so that he can move forward. So, we're asking the council to approve this resolution this evening, authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign the same.
All right, so we're looking for approval for offer resolution number 23-04-12, agreeing to the executive easement for Rainy Road Bridge. Wish of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Councilor Whitney? Do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Andy.
Thanks, sir.
Number five, City Engineer Jesse Story?
Mayor, council, Minnesota Power will be installing a new underground electrical line from 25th Street to the North Hibbing Industrial Park. They'd like an easement along the west side of the Snowmobile Trail just north of 25th Street to install this electrical line. It'll pretty much follow the overhead power that is currently there. Once it gets up to the Hibbing Industrial Park, HITA already approved easements up there for the electrical lines on their property in the industrial park. So, I'm asking for council approval to approve this easement so they can install this line.
All right, so approval for the MN Power easement for the underground power from 25th Street to the North Hibbing Industrial Park. Wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, acting mayor? I'm just curious, Jesse, where's the end of that? What is the, what is the end user goal for this line that they're running?
Talking with Minnesota Power, it just sounds like they want to put a new updated line. They don't have overhead power with this capacity going to the industrial park right now. So, they want to bring it up to the industrial park and then tie it into the northwest corner in Brooklyn. So, they have a continuous system, is what they said.
So, it's just a pass-through line?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, and there's no cost to the City of Hibbing, is that right?
No cost.
Okay, but you'll review it and make sure that it's back to the way it should be?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B.
Mayor, council, attached is an agreement with MNDOT for federal highway administration funds that we used on the 25th Street project last summer. The district stadium engineer was out of the office for a few months, so this should have been done last summer. But this is just so MNDOT can accept federal funds on our behalf so they can reimburse us for the project. So, I'm asking for council approval to approve the agreement and the resolution that is attached.
All right, so we're looking for approval for authorization for the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement between the City of Hibbing and MNDOT, contract number 1052121, and offer resolution number 23-04-13 to accept federal highway administration funds on our behalf. Wish of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Councilor Bayless? Do I have a second?
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to number six, Chief of Police Steve Estes?
Mayor, council, good evening. My first item tonight is to update our new officer hiring process. The days of law enforcement have changed significantly, and it's a lot harder to get applicants. So, with the new updated process, it'll streamline the hiring. So, looking for council approval to move forward with that.
All right, so approval for the updated new officer hiring process with the Hibbing Police Department. Wish of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Councilor Whitney?
Support.
Support by Councilor Schweiger? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to B.
Next, I have three resolutions to accept donations. The first one is in the amount of $2,430 from the Hibbing Police Association for the HPD K9 Fund. These funds were raised through T-shirt and sweatshirt sales and other various fundraising items from the association.
All right, looking for approval for offer resolution number 23-04-14, accepting donations in the amount of $2,430 for the HPD K9 Fund from the Hibbing Police Association. Wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman?
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next one is a $400 grant for National Light Out coming up in August. This is from the Robert Butch Hammer Foundation and as well as the Hibbing Foundation.
All right, we're looking for approval for offer resolution number 23-04-15, accepting a $400 grant for National Light Out from the Robert L. Butch Hammer Foundation Fund of Hibbing Foundation. Wish of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless? Do I have a second?
Support.
Support from Councilor Whitney? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I will abstain, thank you.
All right, motion carries. One more.
And the last one is a $3,000 donation from Walmart. This is also for our K9 program. And I just want to thank all three of these donors, organizations, whatever we prefer to call them, for their donations and grants. We got a really supportive community, and it really shows the support we get from the residents, so I want to thank them.
All right, awesome. Offering resolution number 23-04-17, accepting a donation for the Hibbing Police Department K9 Fund from Walmart in the amount of $3,000. Wish of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Councilor Bayless? Do I have a second?
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to number seven, City Administrator Greg Brinsky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This evening, I would offer resolution 23-04-16, authorizing the City of Hibbing, Minnesota to serve as the sponsor for the Red Rocks ATV Club to facilitate applications with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for trail enhancements and acting on behalf of the Red Rocks ATV Club. For residents at home, we did workshop this. We talked about, you know, what does that mean to be the sponsor? Basically, we would take on trails, and we would, even though we would be the sponsor of the, of the club, the trails would be ours. We would have an agreement with the club to operate, maintain, expand, et cetera. I think the things that I would want to say to our residents, and this came up in our, in our workshop, this is a group of volunteers that are willing to improve the sport that they have a lot of passion for. I think that's what we want to do, is improve the lives of our volunteers. It also would enable them to tap into grant and aid funds, which is key to some of these outdoor activities that we have going on here locally. So, it would require some internal time on our part. We would be the fiscal agent, so grant and aid money would come through the organization and be dispersed. We would be, again, working through an agreement with the club to open trails and declare them accessible, et cetera. So, I would be open to questions, hopefully some answers for you. Otherwise, I would put it to the city council for consideration and action on the resolution.
All right, so we're looking for approval for offer resolution number 23-4-16, authorizing the City of Hibbing, Minnesota to serve as a sponsor for the Red Rock ATV Club to facilitate applications with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for trail enhancements and act on the behalf of the Red Rock, Red Rocks ATV Club as the fiscal agent. Wish of the council?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Councilor Schweiger? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. One item to report this, this evening. And I did send out an email to the city council and staff. So, St. Louis County will be declaring a state of disaster for spring flooding. What that means internally to the city is we will make sure that we're documenting any sort of flood-related activities, repairs. That's usually the first step in getting reimbursed from FEMA. So, more of a report for, for our residents, but also to let the city council know that we will be taking action to get reimbursed, assuming that there is a declaration coming at us. So, other than that, I will yield to the, to the mayor.
Thank you. All right, moving on to number eight, Bids and Quotes. Number one, City Engineer Jesse Story?
Mayor, council, we had an issue with one of our sanitation trucks, the backup truck. Whenever you put it into gear, the motor would cut off. So, we brought it to Midstate Truck Service, and it needed a transmission control module. This is, this truck is in good shape. Like I said, it is a backup truck, but we do use this truck. So, I'm asking for council approval to pay the invoice of $3,881.27 to Midstate Truck Service.
All right, looking for approval of the invoice for replacing the transmission control module on sanitation truck number 66105 from Midstate Truck Service in the amount of $3,881.27. Wish of the council?
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman? Support? Support from Councilor Hildebrand? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B.
Mayor, council, our 2011 Megalom Sweeper, it's our newest old sweeper. We, we were having problems with it last summer, so we brought it to McQueen in December, and they went through the entire thing. It turns out it needed a bunch of electrical... and they went through the entire thing. It turns out it needed a bunch of electrical work, some control modules, some actuators, and two pumps and the actuators for those pumps. And the final tally for those repairs is $16,131.73. We did, we wanted the truck here to test it out before we paid the bill. We did use it for about a week, worked really well, and then we got the snow. Looking at the cost of the new sweepers, it's about $300,000 for our last sweeper. So, we did think that this was a good repair for this equipment. We haven't done anything to this equipment since we bought it. So, I'm asking for council approval to pay this invoice to McQueen.
All right, so we're looking for approval for the repairs and diagnostics on the 2011 Megawatt Sweeper in the amount of $16,131.73 to McQueen. Wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Bayless. Do I have a second?
Support.
Support by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Jesse, is there a warranty then on the work, on the diagnostics and stuff on this?
I believe the warranty is twelve months on the work that they did.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Number Two, City Administrator Greg Brudinski.
Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you. I come before you this evening, hopefully to get an approval to use Masaba Sign Company to make some upgrades to the Welcome to City signs. I believe we have four scattered around town in various locations. And what we are proposing to the city council is that we make a few upgrades. They're actually temporary. What we're proposing to do is take a screen print and basically cover the signs that we currently have with a Welcome to Hibbing, and we'll be kind of working on what the design looks like, with the intent of coming up with a plan that would replace some of those signs with a more permanent structure. So, again, we've workshopped this with our city council. I want to make sure that our residents know what we're thinking. So, this would be a short-term solution. Again, it's a screen print. We just go ahead and slide that over, just the structure out there, while we put together a plan to implement a more permanent solution for those signs. The expenditure is $5,000. It is planned to take it out of operations. We are also proposing with some of our partners, some sort of financial collaboration, if you will. But worst-case scenario is it would be a $5,000 expenditure out of our operating funds. So, with that, any questions I can try to answer?
And those, those are, they're going to fit exactly how the old ones are, and they can replicate the shape? Or is it just going to be like a sleeve that's going to go...
I think it's going to be more of a sleeve. And we're talking about some designs internally. Chris, you had reached out about what's the design going to look like. And we haven't, we haven't really come up with the final design, but I think what we would do is we would come back to the city council, either in a workshop or a regular meeting, and just say, okay, here's what we're proposing for the designs. We might even want to try one or two or three designs based on kind of the square footage we have to work with.
Have we looked at potentially having some local businesses' names on them as far as if there's any interest in that, as far as, you know, funding to find it that way?
Yeah, so for the, for the screen print that we're proposing here is kind of our temporary. We've approached a couple of different businesses around town. We're thinking we'll probably have a bigger push when we have a more permanent design ready to go. I think that'll be a larger expenditure, but I think it'll be a larger impact as well. So, the short answer is yes to both, the short version, the short-term solution and the long-term solution. So, hopefully, we have some people that are some companies that would like to collaborate with us.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, I think there was some discussion in the past who owns those signs and who maintains them. And so, that's, I'm assuming this is going to be put on our maintenance schedule to maintain those four signs moving forward?
That's a great question. I think the original signs that we currently have, I think they were built and funded by a third party. That's my understanding. I think we hold title to each property, if I'm not mistaken. But those are the same organizations that were reaching out to collaborate with us. We haven't contacted them all, so I am not comfortable, like, having that public conversation. Once we have kind of a better idea who wants to be involved financially, we will let the city council and our residents know that.
Thank you.
Do we know the lifespan of the signs that are currently out there now? When were those installed?
Miriam Carroll was, I believe, Dwayne Northaken was here, wasn't he, during that time? I think that was the way we were finding part of that.
Are you just talking about the metallic ones that are in town? Because we're talking about the big ones.
We're talking, I was talking about the big ones, because I thought that all kind of went around the same time. That was, been several years, hasn't it?
Yeah, I think it was like 2004 or 2006, right around there.
Well, yeah. Because those four that we're talking about, they're made of wood, aren't they?
They are, they're lumber. That's correct. And we would be looking for more of a permanent solution.
That was what crossed my mind, like stone or...
Concrete, stone, something that's high impact for people visiting Hibbing, low impact when it comes to maintaining. We would capitalize them over the course of, I would say, 20 to 40 years, depending on what they look like. So, the funding would be there to either do a redesign or an update at some point, but we would capitalize them.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions? All right, so we're looking for approval to upgrade the city of Hibbing signs to Masaba Sign Company in the amount of $5,000. Wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Bayless. Do I have a second?
Support.
Support by Counselor Schweberger. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to Number Three, City Service Director Nickarola.
Good evening, mayor, council. Tonight, I'm looking for your approval to move forward with a purchase of a Planit software. This is a capital planning tool. Right now, I think kind of every department kind of has their own capital plan for all their assets and their equipment and different turnover rates and whatnot. And we don't have a good system to get it all in one location and collaborate together on it so we can do a lot more forecasting in the future on our equipment and our buildings and whatnot. So, this would help, hopefully help with that. It is a not-to-exceed amount of $4,800, and we haven't decided exactly how many licenses we need and how many departments are going to use it, but it would be a not-to-exceed $4,800 amount for that software.
All right, so we're looking for approval for the purchase of Planit software through May 1st, 2024, in the amount not to exceed $4,800 of, for capital planning. Wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Just a quick comment. I would hope every department would participate in using that if we get it. I mean, I think it would be helpful, at least to have everything together, so...
Yes, every department will be on it. Just the number of licenses. We can combine departments under one license, so, but yes, every department will have their equipment and assets involved in this to have a true capital plan, so, yep, we do.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
On to licensing permits. Number One, approve the raffle permit application request for the Hibbing Historic Society to hold their raffle at the Masaba Country Club on Saturday, May 6th, 2023, raffle number 23-04-04. Wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Support. Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number Two, approve this special event permit application for the Hibbing Elks Lodge to hold the Flag Day Ceremony at Veterans Park on Wednesday, June 14th, 2023. Wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Schweberger. Do I have a second?
Support.
Support by Counselor Whitney. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number Three, approve the special event permit application to, of Tanya and Tyler Gustafson to have a live band at the graduation party from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Saturday, June 17th, 2023. Wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Bayless. Support. Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion?
Hey, what's the address of this? In town, in downtown?
Kelly Lake, yeah.
Oh. Not alone in Kelly Lake, so I guess...
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number Four, approve the permit, raffle permit application request of the Angel Fund to hold their raffle on Saturday, June 17th, 2023 at the Masaba Country Club, raffle number 23-04-05. Wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Bayless. Do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number Five, approve the one-day transient merchant application request of Chad Yost, of Chad's Meatwagon. The vendor will be located at Walmart on Friday, April 28th, 2023. Wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Whitney?
Support.
Support by Counselor Schweberger. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number Six, approve the two-day transient merchant application request of Kate Henke, Oriella's Creamery LLC. The vendor will be located at Walmart on Fridays, April 28th, and May 12th, 2023. Wish of the council?
Motion to... Approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman.
I will support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number Seven, approve the temporary on-sale liquor license of St. Michael's Church of Hibbing to dispense alcohol in the parish hall on Saturday, June 3rd, 2023. Wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Schweberger. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To the closed session, I'll need a motion to approve closed session pursuant to attorney-client privilege for potential litigation pursuant to MD Minnesota 13D.05 subdivision 03B. Wish of the council?
Mayor, before that motion, I just, for the record, I have to advise that, as the council was aware, a few weeks ago, we had a closed session. This is an ongoing issue with regard to that. And because most meetings are presumed to be open, when you have a potential litigation issue, the council does have the right to go into closed session. And so, in my opinion, it's better to contemplate this issue in closed session for the council and the city's strategy to advise them. And that's why I'm advising you to go into closed session with regard to this.
Are we able to adjourn prior and then go after it and come back after?
You could adjourn your meeting now, right, with the contemplation. You're not going to take any action necessarily on that issue tonight, but just, it's to bring you up to date.
Okay. So, for the closed session, wish of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Bayless. Support?
Support. Go ahead, Mr. Counsel Schweberger.
Support by Counselor Schweberger. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then, we will not be coming back, so we are going to adjourn. So, I'm going to need a motion for adjournment.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Counselor Whitney, support. Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.